Good afternoon and welcome to the October the 3rd work session for of the Mayor and City Council of Heggers Town. This meeting is now called to order. And first, we have some proclamations. We do Character Counts Week, and we have Ms. Carolyn Brooks, who is the founder and director of Character Counts, Washington County, Maryland. Could you join me with it? Character Counts proclamation for Character Counts Week, October 15 through 21st, 2023. Whereas, Character Counts provides a framework of universal values that transcend cultural, religious, political, and socio-economic values through the six pillars of character: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. Whereas, the next generation will be stewards of our communities, nation, and world in critical times, and the present and future well-being of our society requires an involved, caring citizen with good character. And whereas, these pillars of character can be learned and modeled by the leaders of our community to improve interactions in our society among citizens of all ages, in turn fostering a higher quality of life and enhancing the image of our city. And whereas, we count on our partners to help provide strong and constructive guidance for our citizens through Character Counts in our homes, schools, religious institutions, civic groups, places of business, and community gathering places. And now therefore, I, Tekeisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Heggers Town, do hereby proclaim and recognize, October 15 through 21st, 2023, to be Character Counts Week, and I encourage all citizens to model these traits of good character and an ongoing commitment to promote character development and proper behavior throughout our community. Thank you for your work that you do, year after year after year after year. Twenty-five years. Wow. Thank you. That is a lot of commitment. Thank you for your service and leadership to our city.
As everybody knows, and we can see the pillar names around the council room, and I'm really proud of that, that they continue to stay there. Certainly, Character Counts advocates good behavior, and we look to the leadership in our community to model and represent good character because the next generation is watching all of us. So, we certainly promote and advocate for being kind and just being a better person. So, we do set good role models for the generation that's coming behind us. So, thank you for your support. Hopefully, everybody remembers those pillar names. Six simple words can make a difference in a lot of people's lives. Thank you.
All right. And next, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and with us, we have Mark Pennington, Assistant Director of CASA. Yes, Assistant Director of CASA. Thank you. Thank you for being here. How you doing?
Doing well. Thank you.
Are you ready?
I am.
Yeah, this is like an essay. It's like a hundred words. I know. I did. Proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2023. Whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that domestic violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member of the City of Heggers Town. And whereas, according to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, 34.4% of Maryland women and 28.8% of Maryland men experience intimate partner physical violence, an intimate partner rape, and other intimate partner stalking. Whereas, we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent domestic violence and how to support survivors. And whereas, staff and volunteers of anti-violence programs in and at the City of Heggers Town encourage every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small. Whereas, through prevention, education, and increased awareness, there is a compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing domestic violence in the City of Heggers Town and hope perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions. Now therefore, I, Tekeisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Heggers Town, join anti-domestic violence advocates and support service programs in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end domestic violence, along with the United States government and State of Maryland. Thank you so much for your work that you do.
Thank you.
Yes, would you like to say?
Sure. Well, thank you for this, and please help us kind of try to stop domestic violence. It is unfortunately on the rise. Just the last quarter, we had 45 hospital accompaniments where we sent an advocate to the local hospital here. That's up about 15 people from the previous quarter itself. So, anything we can do to help educate and get the word out, let us know what we can do to help this community. Thank you.
And next up, we have Fire Prevention Month, and with us, we have Dale Fishak, our Fire Marshal, and Adam Hopkins, our Battalion Chief. I'm not going to make everyone else come up here with you guys. Yep, I think so. If we got to stand up here, they all got to stand up here. That's right. And there's our only woman Fire Marshal. Yeah. I just learned that. Yeah. It's really cool. Proclamation for Fire Prevention Month, October 2023. Whereas, the City of Heggers Town is committed to ensuring the safety and security of those living in, working in, and visiting the City of Heggers Town. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. Homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Working smoke alarms in the home reduce the risk of dying in a reported fire by more than half. Cooking is the leading cause of house fires, with 40% of all home fires involved cooking equipment. Cooking is also the leading cause of home fires injuries. Unattended cooking is the leading cause of home cooking fires and related deaths. Heggers Town residents are reminded to always stay in the kitchen, use a timer for food with longer cook times, and avoid distractions that remove focus from what's on the stove. Whereas, Heggers Town Fire Department personnel and its volunteer fire companies are dedicated to educating people about the risks to home fires in ways they can better protect themselves and their loved ones. Whereas, the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. Oh, that's rhymes. Pay attention to fire prevention bars. This theme focuses on reinforcing the critical importance of cooking safely. Cooking safety works to educate public about simple but important steps that can help reduce the risk of fire when cooking at home, keeping themselves and those around them safe. Now therefore, with the support of the City Council, I, Tekeisha Martinez, Mayor of the City of Heggers Town, do hereby recognize the month of October 2023 as Fire Prevention Month, and urge all residents to stay in the kitchen when cooking, install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each sleeping room, and on every level of the home, including the basement, and to know two ways out of every room if possible, and to practice your home fire drill at least twice a year with everyone in the household. I had the honor of, I was going to say this in my closing comments, but some of you guys might leave. I had the honor of attending your honoree dinner and ceremony, and I just want to say that I learned of a very strong brotherhood that you guys have, the way that you not only look after our city, but also each other. And so, thank you sincerely from the bottom of my heart for your leadership and your service to our city.
I would like to remind everybody that while it reports the 40% of national fires are home cooking fires, that holds true here in City of Heggers Town. We do have a cooking problem here, so I encourage everybody to practice fire safety while cooking, not leave their cooking intended. And I need to remind you that cooking is not only in the kitchen, it also extends to when you're grilling, and not to use grills on balconies and overhangs. Keep them away from the residence when you're doing that. And the Fire Department has a free smoke detector program. If anybody doesn't have one, it's available. Contact us, and we'll be happy to come out and test your detector or put a new one up for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Make sure you can see. Don't hide behind. Okay, guys. There we go, and good smile, and one, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Now whereas. Next up, we have Community Coalition 2023 Lobbying Review. And with us, we have Paul Frye, President of Washington County Chamber of Commerce, and Mr. Jim Kurtzrevold, President Greater Heggers Town Committee.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Scott, Donna. Glad to see everyone. And reflecting after our annual meeting last week, there's so much going on here in Heggers Town, Washington County, over the years. And it reminds me, the Coalition, you know, it takes 20 years, 25 years to be an overnight success. So, we've been working really hard. We're going into our 19th year of the Coalition, working to bring funds here to Heggers Town, Washington County. And so, we had another successful year this past year. We want to thank you for your support. Again, since we started this program in 2005, we had some progress. I think this last session in 2023 might be the last session where there's a few funds floating around. Jim will talk about what we're doing here in 2024. But some of the successes we've had, as you've all heard, the $100 million to Y-91 from West Virginia up to exit five. We received some funding to do a Pell study for the bridge in Williamsport that comes over to maybe relocate that. As you know, when there's traffic issues in 81, it comes through Williamsport, we're trying to maybe relocate that bridge and make it more efficient. Funding that was originally preauthorized in 2021 remained in the capital budget for the Field House, and another $1 million was added this past year, again, thanks to the Coalition team, but also Delegate Grossman and Senator Quarterman, a number of other delegation members. The tax sale vacant abandoned properties legislation, some of that got through. Again, it was Delegate Grossman and Buckle and Hindball were the sponsors on the House side, Senate side. It was filed by Senators Quarterman and Rosepeffy. So, that passed. Education, as you know, the arc over at HCC has been there, I think, 20 years, 25 years, and so, they're looking at what needs to be redone, refurbished there, as well as some other sporting activities on campus. So, got some money for that research. Health and Public Safety, the Training Building, got some more dollars included for apparatus operator defensive driving track. And I believe the city participates out there as well with some of the training. And then for the Douglas Bass Museum of History Preservation, $200,000 from a bond initiative was funded for the House and Senate. So, we had some success this past year. And again, the city's been partners for many, many years. We appreciate that. We're here to talk about what we have on the list for the coming year in 2024 and to ask for your continued support. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, Council, again, for all your support. I do want to take a minute, as I do each year, but we can't live without Eric, who helps design our booklet every year for that. Eric makes that job really easy. He makes the booklet good. We always get good reports from the people we share it with. So, I know Eric's in the back room, but Eric, thanks for working with me in particular every year with that, because that is a challenge, and you don't want me to have to do it by myself. Just a couple of things that are different. As Paul said, you know, the capital money has been flowing the last several years, which we've all been a benefit from. It's really helped a lot with that. This year, with direction from our lobbyists, which you may read in the paper, there's projecting certain budget shortfalls. The Maryland Blueprint for Education has taken effect. That's impacting a lot of the budget. So, we've been advised by our lobbyist team that we need to be much more prioritized this year, limit our requests down to, you know, one or two items per partner. Try to keep that as small as possible because that the leadership, as they go and figure out how to allocate a limited supply of money, are going to be looking for what are the priorities for the county, and they can't give everybody everything they want. So, we're trying to work that issue down. What you have in your packet is the list of agenda items that the Coalition has been working on the last several meetings. These are all just items that are recommended for the agenda next year. At the next meeting on October 11th, we're going to actually make decisions if we need to prioritize this down a little bit. We've been much more realistic this year. The list of items under consideration are probably about two-thirds of what they've been in the past. So, it's a smaller list to start with, but we may scale this down a little bit more. Just depends what the partners like, and we're looking for your input on that as well. Most of these are repeats of long-term projects that you are aware of. I-81, you know, now that we have half of the I-81 funded, we're working for the other half, particularly to try to get the design and engineering money for the final phase that takes us from Halfway Boulevard up to the Pennsylvania line. It takes five or six years to get the design and engineering done, and that's about when it's going to, when Phase Two is going to be completed in 2028 or 2029. We want to make sure we're ready to come then to try to identify funding for the final phase and keep this project moving along without any breaks. We all know the challenges we have there. In fact, a lot of the fatalities that have taken place, particularly some of the tragedies the last two years, have taken place in the second half that's not even funded yet. So, we're advocating very strongly for I-81, and that will continue to be on the agenda. I-70, Maryland-65 interchange, another long-term transportation item. That's one of the faster-growing areas in there. They're doing work out there, but the interchange is the next big portion of that, and so far, we have not gotten funding for that in the CTP. That's the state's consolidated transportation plan. Williamsport, one of the reasons that's highlighted in yellow is we're waiting for more information. As Paul mentioned, last year, they got some money for a Pell study. They're hoping to have the results of that study later this month and be able to kind of identify what may be a request for that next stage of the project. That is going to be a major cost to relocate a bridge across the river. So, that's another long-term project. So, we're waiting for some direction from the Pell study to see what we do there. That's one of Williamsport's main items. Community revitalization, as you know, the Field House is still the priority for the number-one item there for the city for community revitalization. As Paul mentioned, there was one bill that did not pass last year related to tax sale vacant properties, and we've added that item back on the agenda to see if we could get that bill that didn't get through the system last year through this year. One new item this year is Williamsport Springfield Manor property. That's property that they'd like to get some funding to acquire and upgrade for some educational purposes over there in the town. I think you're familiar with the barn, that they do some events, but this is the property that surrounds that. One of the items the county put forward is the Dorment Black Heritage Museum. The last year, that was on our agenda as well, but did not get any state funding. Health and Public Safety, Long-Term Water and Wastewater Infrastructure Need Study, that was on the list for last year, as you know, and we certainly appreciate the city and the county working together. And I had a good educational meeting with the two bodies a few months ago, where you went over some of the challenges. We've been reviewing the comprehensive plan that the county has out now with their draft, and it highlights the need for long-term water and sewer infrastructure based on projected growth, or we're going to run into some challenges there. This study would help identify at least a starting point for where we need to go with infrastructure. The county Public Safety Training Building, last year, they did get money for a defensive driving track. The next phase of that project that they're looking for has to do with propane firefighting training props. This is not a burn building, but this is more of working with propane issues and some training for that, as well as a high bay training building where they have indoor area where they can store apparatus and do some training that requires upper levels and more height in a building, indoor training. The CVB, once again, is asking for money for a new visitor center, which would be right around the corner off Antietam Street in the old Antietam Paper Building. They did not get any funding for that this year, last year, and they're going to ask again this year. And then for education, originally, we were looking at possibly looking for funding for the Williamsport Library. However, the library isn't ready to go for that request yet. Another one of the directions we received from our delegation, as well as the lobbyists, was any of the projects that we do request for, the General Assembly wants to see those projects ready to move forward. Apparently, the last couple of years, they've been getting organizations that got capital funding coming back and asking for an extension in time because they were not ready to get those projects finished. And the General Assembly wants to make sure if they're going to allocate out limited amounts of money, that it's going to projects that are shovel-ready and ready to go and get completed by the time that they are being requested for. So, again, any project we're asking for, we need to make sure that we could defend that we're ready to move forward with that. So, for example, your field turf house is a good example, one that's ready. You've already done some of the design and engineering. Anything there is ready to move forward. You already got a timeline set for that. That's what they're looking for, something that's ready to move. Under the watch list, the watch lists are just items that they aren't really specific asked. These are just items of issues of importance to the community that we're asking our lobby to keep track of and let us know of any thing that develops regarding these issues. The tourism group is looking for some increased funding for their annual allocation under Tourism Promotions Act. That money goes directly to different grants that come to our DMOs, which has benefited Heggers Town as well as other towns and municipalities in the county with tourism grants. The community college is making sure that their funding levels stay the same. Whenever you hear budget deficits, you have concerns that maybe some cuts will be made. Same with the state libraries. They're looking for some additional allocations in their capital funding for projects. They want to make sure that we keep track of that. Gaming revenue is something we want to protect, as well as any state liabilities that are being shifted over to local governments, by making sure that the state's not passing on expenses that local governments have to pick up. USMH wants to make sure that the funding for University of Maryland is kept whole. Also, the Commission on Transportation Revenue and Infrastructure, that's a commission that's looking at what is the next way we're going to fund transportation infrastructure with gas tax going away as cars revert to electric vehicles and cars continue to get higher miles per gallon. The gas tax revenue continues to drop to a fraction of what it's been. We can't continue to fund the Transportation Trust Fund with gas tax. We need other revenues. So, they're looking into what we need to do for that. We mentioned the Route 11 Bridge, and then I mentioned the Maryland Blueprint for Education. That's going to impact a lot in the county and how they decide to fund that, particularly in the out-years where the bigger deficits are being projected. So, we want to monitor that part. In addition, there's been some discussion of annexation legislation, tax differential laws between the counties and municipalities, if any of those get put in, trying to keep us abreast of what's going on with those issues, so we're familiar. So, that takes care of the items that were on our list of agenda for consideration. Again, the next meeting will be October 11th. That's an important meeting for us to try to make some final decisions on what we want the agenda to be. We will be meeting with our state delegation on November 6th to try to talk to them about what the agenda is, who want to have this in place. It's also important for our state delegation, if there's any bills to put in, to try to get them in early so that they could get, we could kind of get to the committees early before everything gets clogged up in committees, because there's 3,000 or 4,000 bills put in every year. We try to get our projects. We've learned if we get our projects and our legislation in early and get through the system quicker, it has a better chance of success. So, if there's any questions, let us know. And again, if you have any new items that you want to add to this list for consideration, or if you have feelings about some of the items on the list, please let your representative know who comes to our next meeting on the 11th so that we can make some of those decisions. Thank you.
The reason why House Bill 17...
Scott, do you know more about that? Because I...
There was not sufficient confidence that the bill would not displace people who lived in a house that still had abatements like renters, and that that would be a cause for eviction, for ability to evict. So, we didn't feel the language had that, was like that, but we're going to make sure in this next submission that it's made very clear that this would not, this would be for vacant structures only, not any that are inhabited by...
The ones we're discussing with Paul.
Yes. Yeah, those are all vacancies. Right.
So, I'd like to just note, of course, the date you see in there, our next Dayton-Anapolis reception, Wednesday, January 31st. Again, we have great feedback from our General Assembly members that note, we do a good job of promoting Washington County, what's happening here. So, that's on the calendar. And again, since 2005, you all have been supporting this Coalition, and it's been at $5,000. That would be our request for you all to consider, and we'd appreciate it. And again, thanks for the work everyone's doing, because we see progress here over the last few years.
So, I know it has come up from at least a couple of individuals over the last year or two, that, you know, we obviously do this coordinated effort, which has been a good and fruitful effort for the things that we used to sort of argue over, you know, which item's number one, and everybody's item was number one, right? But in recent years, obviously, the city, you know, we've engaged the services of additional lobbying efforts. The county did it, I guess, a little bit before us. And I know that there was some consternation expressed that maybe that fragments the effort a bit. And so, I think it's only fair, I think, for this body to acknowledge, at least for me, like, that's my continued interest, is that we also continue to have those lobbying efforts that we've employed to direct those efforts that we have, you know, an interest in individually proceeding with. And so, I just maybe want to know...
I think we talked about that. I was going to comment on the feedback.
Yeah, I think some of the feedback, we were, it's kind of funny if you see how this whole process has changed, because somebody who was there at the beginning, you know, at the beginning, we had to work hard to try to convince everybody that you need a professional who understands, who has the connections in Anapolis, who knows how the system works and how the rules work, and can really get people to answer phone calls. And that was, to try to get that funded originally was hard. We had people say, "Oh, you don't need that. Our delegation works for us," which they do. "We don't need a lobbyist." And we finally got that convinced that that was of value. And then that started working together. Now, we're kind of on the other side, where... Now, we're kinda on the other side, where, you know, the coalition was meant for everybody, for the group of partners to come in and say, here's a list of projects that we all agree on, hundred percent, no, there's no, there's no objection to it. So that when they go down there, we lobby for them, that we don't have other groups, the same groups that are coming and trying to say, no, this is good, no, it's bad, no, it's good, that sort of thing. But as other groups, you know, always have the ability to advocate for other items that are not on the list, they certainly have the ability to bring in their own lobbyists if they wanna do that. But we are getting some pushback, I guess, on just, really, it's more of a confusion when you're in the leadership, somebody like a committee chair, he'll have a lobbyist for the coalition, who they work with, come in, say, here's the issues, and then they're followed by another lobbyist who comes in and maybe talking about the same issue, and he's kinda like, well, why do we have two? What's, they don't understand exactly how that's set up. We let the partners know that, that, you know, and, and you, you know, the partner, this is a partner-owned organization, so, you know, you make your own decisions on how you wanna handle getting outside lobbyists for your own other specific issues or not. What we do try to tell, I know John has always worked well with, is we make sure John is open to sharing any information he has or assistance to anybody's outside lobbyists, so that we are trying to share the same mindset. We wanna make sure, like, our requests match up. Sometimes we've heard that, like, one request goes out, it's, it's five million, and then another one goes in and says it's seven million, and we, we need to try to tighten that up. So, if there are, if you are lobbying outs with another lobbyist from your own, that we are all sharing the same information, so that it's being portrayed the same way to our leadership down there, at the committee chair level in particular. So, I mean, again, we're not saying you could do it or not do it, that's certainly up to any partner, what they wanna do. We are saying that we are starting to hear a little confusion happening, because we have so many of them. I mean, right now, we had, I know the county typically had one from time to time, the cities had one from time to time, but now we also have, Williamsport will get one from time to time, Boonsborough, who's not a member of the coalition this year, they've had one, Smithburg has had, like, one that's kinda worked for a couple of different places. So, you know, we went from having no lobbyists to, like, multiple lobbyists, and that has caused a little bit of confusion down there. So, you know, that's what we're trying to share about that with the partners at the beginning. Again, it's partner-owned. You guys decide what you think's best for the, the overall end, and our job's to work with it.
I think, you know, like anything else, just communication, let's talk with each other, so when, if we're, when we're down there, you know, we know what's happening, and when you're down there, you know what's happening as well. That's all, I think, just communicate.
I also don't wanna let go of, you know, there's two focuses of the coalition. One is the individual projects, but the other is to really try to build a brand of our community down in Annapolis, which, to me, has been almost more successful than the individual projects. From us having that reception every year, coming down as a group, when, when we're bringing in leadership that's sitting in front of, you know, a hundred people in a room, it makes an impact. It says that our community is engaged, that we wanna, you know, we, we do have unity. We get told that all the time about how could, we wish our county could be a little more like Washington County, and how they bring everybody together. So, those receptions and that part that the coalition does is also just as important, I think, as, you know, the individual programs trying to get money in certain spots. So, I do think that is, is something of value that I appreciate. Your guys have a, I know tables and vendors every year, that yours, your team comes down, your economic development team and things like that. So, just to share, you know, if you have some other issues with that, let us know. I mean, we're happy to do it, but this is your organization, it's partner-owned. Paul and I, I mean, we're, we are organizations of partners, but we really try to just do the facilitation, just to keep it together. We tend to let the, the public governments really shape what the agenda looks like and push us this year.
You guys have anything else? Thanks.
Thanks. Have a good week.
You too.
Good chair.
Next, we have Invest Hagerstown and Partners in Economic P E P Guidelines Application Updates. And then we have Chris Semmerling, Economic Development Specialist.
Good afternoon.
Good, Chris.
So, we're here to follow up on a July 18th, 2023 work session item, where we brought forth proposed guideline updates for both our Invest Hagerstown program, as well as our Partners in Economic Progress. In the side of the packet, you'll see nine of the 10 items that we had brought forward. We did remove the one item that mayor and council did not support, and incorporate those into the attached guideline and application attachments that you see here as well. At this time, we would like to see if there's any kind of questions or comments, or if we can move forward with making these updates accordingly.
You guys have questions, comments? You're good?
Nope.
Looks like we're done.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. We'll be bringing this back to regular session for the official bulletin.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Anybody, before you move forward, can anybody answer me, when we talked about the non-profits applying for, applying to those applications, including the September...
That deadline was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, as notice is being sent, is anybody...
They have, they're still reviewing, they got over 50 applications down there. They, I think they finished, is Brittany in here? Nobody, Chris is here.
She has four applications, a major, you get it.
Okay. And then you're, then it's on the agenda this month to come back with the...
No, in November.
With their, in November, for the recommendation, yes.
In November.
Yes.
Okay. It just takes forever. Well, I know, but you got four applications to, to look at yet, and it's the first week of October, and so now we're not gonna come back in, in, to November.
It's almost like we should have implemented that program.
Oh, I told you. So, I just told you so.
I had a nickel.
Are y'all ready?
We swimming like scurrying dogs.
Always want to nod. All right. Next up, we have building and trade codes updates. So, thus, we have Blaine Moem, Chief Code Official, and Pamela Harris. Oh, wait a minute.
Unfortunately, Blaine, Blaine's, Blaine's not here today, so then I'm, I'm filling.
Pamela Harris. Wait a minute, Blaine.
The building and trade codes, the state has finally adopted their 2021 version of the international codes.
Wow, you thought October was that?
Boy, they were. So, we're just following through, when the state adopts their code, we have to adopt our amendments within a certain amount of time, or we have to accept the state code as written.
Does that sound good?
So, Pam, she went through everything here. She outlined several items on the memo there for some of the items, that some noted changes to the 21 codes, and then also what our local amendments would be for items. She did the monotonous task of reading all of these codebooks and figuring out what things had changed and everything.
Anything, just like, jump out?
I know, one of the biggest changes that we, that it's gonna affect us, I know that we had an application or discussion not long ago about intermodal shipping containers being used as buildings, the Heritage Museum. That is now going to be allowed, based on the building code in certain instances, and that will also change Chapter 184 of our city code, because we do not allow them. So, that'll be a later review. And then there was some stuff that was kind of more business-friendly, change in occupancy classification, if you're changing from, say, a mercantile occupancy to a business occupancy, it lessens the hazard for occupants. So, it would, while it's a change of use, it might not incur as many changes as far as what the building code would require. Also, the clarifications for the plumbing code for gender, gender-neutral bathrooms. Before, you would have to have so many male and female bathrooms, where now you can combine them and you have to provide so many total bathrooms, which works out well if you have a small occupancy, then you don't have to provide separate bathrooms, you can provide three bathrooms instead of two for each.
Like, almost back in the old days where...
Right.
You know, everybody used the same bathroom.
Yeah.
You know, lock the door.
Right. That'll actually help some of the downtown with adding accessible restrooms and things of that nature.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Very helpful.
So, getting back to the use of intermodal shipping containers and classifying them as buildings?
They are allowing in the building code to repurpose these shipping containers to use them as the structure for which you would build...
Like tiny houses?
Tiny houses.
Or three together, whatever.
Office buildings, that kind of thing.
See, a long time, man.
Yeah.
Cool.
So, let's use the example that I can think of, which I brought up a question about when it was installed some years back as a building outside of the city, down Virginia Avenue, as you go to the mall, or to Target, I guess. And there on the right is, you know, a conglomeration of, 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 yeah, containers that are stacked side by side in a uniform manner, made to look like a building, but they're not. And they're, they're not.
That's actually a storage facility.
Right, that's what it is.
Yeah, and, and that goes back to, there is, we have a portable storage container that you're not allowed to have them or use them for storage, so that would obviously have to change slightly, but this is actually for an occupied space, not just for storage.
So, when you say change slightly, I think maybe I would, just as a, as a regular citizen, I'm trying to quantify visually in my mind what that may mean. Is this in all districts, just commercial districts? Could, how will that change in residential districts? Maybe that's the simplest question.
Depending on what you would want to use them for.
Uh-huh.
If you're going to build a house out of them, you, you would definitely have to have plans of some sort, but if it meets the residential neighborhood and is residential, that, that would be permitted.
Do we have to allow this, or is this a change in the code of something we can allow?
So, the code, the code will allow, the building code will allow it to be used as, as things to be built from, but Chapter 184 prohibits these types of containers in the city of Hagerstown, so that would be a separate discussion that we could have with the council on, what do we wanna permit and what type of zoning districts and what areas of town.
So, if we were to allow it, let's say, could, could somebody put one on their property and now say it's a shed?
As of right now, no.
No, I mean, if we were to change that stuff.
Correct, if you wanted to change it, they could.
It could, the best of maximum support.
Right.
I'm just trying to rationalize that. I can't have, you know, you can't have your camper there, because it, it doesn't look good, but you can have a big rusty metal container.
And it all depends on what standards that you want to do. The one thing that you saw featured in Herald Mail, I can't remember, it was front page, whatever, that North High repurposed a shipping container that was used as a concession stand. They scanned the outside of it, it, you wouldn't even know it was a C container.
Those are the things I think I wanna get to as a property owner, is what am I going to see if this were allowed to then be placed regularly in residential neighborhoods?
And, and that's where Chapter 184 can get into the appearance of a C container, or shipping container. This standard goes with of how they have to be anchored to the ground, what type of footing or slab they'd have to be sat on. It goes into the details of how they have to be secured, so that they wouldn't blow away or move in the event of any type of natural occurrence, whereas this, Chapter 184 can be modified to what do we want it to appear like when we're having one of these installed in our town.
Yeah, cause I mean, for me, you know, here's the reality, you know, the city of Hagerstown is sixty-plus or minus percent rental versus interoccupied, right? And I just could imagine, because of the cost efficiency of such items, that they once are allowable, are employed in that easy manner, in, you know, in a fashion where, you know, you have any number of places that, that install them, and get to the aesthetics of improving them, you know, under the conditions of the additional part of the code that we may later employ to apply to them, right? Which is, sounds really good on paper, but then now it's six months, and nine months, and 12 months, and 18 months, that, that let's say, one of these doesn't go through that process. And then we're looking at you, code, and going, hey, you know, I'm getting these communications about this, you know, and this isn't something you can just go and sort of grab and pick up, you know what I mean? Or, or, or deconstruct, or tag, or have removed, I mean, so I just, I think that, that we need to keep that in mind when we get into those discussions of, of to what degree we would allow them, you know, to be placed in residential neighborhoods, you know, especially in yards. They typically would not come with foundation, right? Which means you're talking about the potential for, frankly speaking, rodent infestation, you know, the grounds under them, because there is no foundation. I just think there's a host of things we need to think about before we, you know, visualize what we see on, you know, on, it's not H D T V anymore, it's what? Magnolia Network, right? Where they look really awesome, and, and, and so that's what I'm saying, like, like, what you have in your mind...
Right.
Is not what you drive around and see.
Yeah, this, this change in the code makes it allowable to be a structure. Our code currently prohibits them, period. So, we would have to look at that, definitely.
Right. So, that change in the code allows them to be, we have to accept that change, is what you're saying?
This is a change in the building code that says that if you are to use this, this is what you have to do to be able to use it as the structural portion of the building. Our Chapter 184 prohibits them, period.
But if it's allowable in state code, then it has to be allowable in city code. But we can have requirements in city code.
Correct.
Which is what you're asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yep.
Okay. So, there ain't any other big changes?
No. No, I mean, for the most part, most of the amendment changes were rearranging to make it easier to identify the commercial residential codes in the building code, that kinda stuff.
Well, it took it two years to put it together.
You guys good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, don't go nowhere, Paul. Taxe properties, Neighborhood Service Manager.
I'll have Pam sit up here, Scott.
You sit up here too, you want to. Just get him, get him camera. So, and as we've kind of alluded to a little bit earlier, with Greater Hagerstown talking about things, that the tax sale properties that we had, we've talked to you back in July about how we were withholding properties from the tax sale, and that we had 19 parcels that were just vacant land that did not go, get sold at tax sale. So, we've been working with the treasurer's office on determining what the outstanding taxes are owed, as discussed back in July, on the waiver of taxes. The city, we would be looking at waiving $972,291.34 of city taxes owed on the 25 parcels. Our ask is going to be going to the county commissioners to do $142,064.77 for these 25 parcels, and we're seeking the waiver of these taxes to reduce the cost overall to the city to acquire these parcels, so that we can move them, whether or not they're to the neighboring property owners through our Chapter 224 with the city code, or the city demolishes the property and tries to find a redeveloped purpose for those particular ones. On the second page of the memo, there's that black line that you see, the ones above the black line, those are the ones that we've demolished. The ones below the black line are actually all of the vacant parcels already, so they'll just be looking to move those. But basically, we're going to be seeking the county, Board of County Commissioners, I guess, approval to try to waive the taxes of the county portion, so that it reduces the overall cost to the city. Our cost to the city would be only the state taxes owed for these parcels, which is just over nineteen thousand. That's right. That's right.
So that we can put these properties to use again.
Correct, either putting them to use or getting them to a neighboring property so that we don't have to maintain them. Basically, the code office is constantly mowing or maintaining these properties and the taxes are just going up.
Sure, taxes and fees are going up and that's all there is to it.
I think Scott worked on a date potentially with the county commissioners or working on it in two weeks that will make this ask. If they don't choose to waive them, then our cost would be the county taxes plus the state taxes.
Well, then we should make sure that none of these properties ever pay county taxes again. I mean, face it, they're not going to get a hundred and forty-two thousand, sixty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents in our lifetime. Waive it, let us put these things back on the tax rules where they belong.
Right.
You guys have anything else?
Nope. I just can't wait until I drive by sixty, well, six-six-one to six-six-three Pennsylvania Avenue and no longer see it there.
Yep. And I think that to Bob's point, you know, and I said this so many times, there, there isn't a place in town you couldn't drive by and go, I wish that that place were gone.
Yep.
And for me, it's Snyder Avenue, and I know, I know that there is a horrible backstory to that, that entire property, but the way it has sat for nearly a decade now, to Bob's point, and I think that we need to impress upon the county and the state counterparts is the taxes are only going to accumulate and the residents that live next to them, you know, their taxes are going up because I still don't believe the state's coming out and doing a real assessment of that exact property, right? While their property value is going down, right? And it just, for them, it, it goes the opposite direction both ways, you know, assessment after assessment. There's no way, I mean, you couldn't pay me to buy a place next, next to some of them and, and so, you know, that's the real crime here, I think, to, to, to the entire issue.
Intergradation of the entire neighborhood.
Yeah, is that the impact to the neighborhood, not the ability to, to capture and repurpose these properties. It's the twenty around it that, that suffer.
It's a long time coming. Glad to see that we're coming to a close.
It was benefit of that one state bill that was passed last year to help us with that and the other one, if it, if it gets through this next coming year, will actually speed up the process. Unfortunately, this, we have to go through the same process as a private individual. The bill that's, that failed, as Councilmember Bruchy mentioned, was to speed up the process for municipalities and they, it didn't go through. So hopefully, we can get the amendments done and get that passed to speed up the process.
Yep. Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Antietam Creek Source Water Supply, Nancy are Director of Utilities. And Tyler Puffenberg. Hi, Ben. Water.
My name is Casey. Hello. It's a long story. For those of you that have not met Tyler, Tyler is our Deputy Director of Water and Wastewater. So, and he's gonna help out tonight. So, in March of twenty twenty-three, we were approached by DNR and they wanted to know if we were interested at all in potentially remove, potentially removing the Edgemont Reservoir. And they explained that the reason they wanted to do this is because some genetic issues that they have been observing with the trout population, the viable trout population, which is impacted by the impoundment, the, the dam. So what we told them, or what I told them was that, that we couldn't even consider doing this unless we had a viable alternate supply that would, you know, be on some level equal to or better than what we have. So, we approached MDE and asked them if they would consider an appropriation permit for the Antietam, on the Antietam upstream of our wastewater treatment plant. And we asked them, we, we told them that we'd be interested in a five MGD average day plant. The significance of the five MGD, from my perspective, is this. One, it is our, our max at Edgemont, our max month is, is four point five to four point eight, depending on where the state finally lands. So equal to or greater than that max. But equally important is we know that the Wilson Plant cannot, cannot produce twenty MGD because of, because of the change in regulations from the thirties to current, even with the upgrades. So we know we're comfortable with fifteen at Wilson, maybe a little more. So the five million also gets us back to that twenty million, that twenty MGD. And it also then allows us the ability, if you will, to make those improvements to Wilson, Wilson, like down the road a little bit, not real far down the road, but down the road a little bit, not only to Wilson, but to the transmission mains. Because we, with the, with the plant on the Antietam and a plant at Wilson, we can, we can act, we'll be able to meet those demands while we would upgrade the transmission mains. We can't do that now as we set. So, when we went to the state, we said, you know, five MGD plant. And I was pleasantly, very pleasantly, I won't say surprised, but maybe relieved that the state said, let's talk about it. It has merit. So we reached out to Hazen and Sawyer and we've been having discussions with MDE for the last couple of months. And we've kind of reached the point where we said, okay, let's bring it to mayor and council to, to see what their thoughts are and, and kind of go over the advantages. There's, there's other advantages and that I think are equally important is, one, this water plant would, would be somewhere up, you know, it, the intake would be upstream of the wastewater plant, but the plant would likely be located inside municipal limits or maybe just on the outskirts, but it would serve a portion of the base zone. A portion of the base zone would be in, I'm gonna say Hagerstown, you know, inside municipal limits. Right now, if we lose one of the transmission mains that comes, you know, comes through, past Park Circle and comes through that way, we, you know, we have some challenges in, in keeping, we would have some challenges in keeping the city supplied. Another thing a, a plant in this location would do is just help address some of the deficiencies, if not all of the deficiencies in Zone Five with pressure and volume. We would look at the distribution system, reconfigure it, if you will, with valves and maybe some new pipe. We haven't worked through all of that yet, but essentially have a viable supply that covers like the Frederick Street, Jefferson, Eastern, and that whole corridor. In, in doing that, we also address some water quality issues. We wouldn't have to flush as hard as often during the summer when we have a hard time maintaining chlorine residuals in some locations. And it would also allow us to potentially reduce some of the water age issues going to the north. It also, while we'll always be very, very reliant on Wilson, it does take a little bit of the burden off of Wilson to allow us to do work without, without doing it in the middle of the night and possibly putting customers out of service. So, you know, from my perspective, working through it, you know, it's, it's a win-win. With the Edgemont Reservoir, one of the things that we told the DNR is that it had to be to the fullest extent possible cost neutral, that it would be, if, if they wanted this, then they would need to find the funding for it. And they are working on funding now in, in hopes that that could become a reality. The, DNR Fisheries is working on that. I believe they're also partnering with, partnering with the Corps of Engineers, the Dam Safety Program and that sort of thing, looking at Edgemont to remove it. I do not have a cost analysis for the source on the Antietam, but knowing we would be investing at least thirty million in, in Edgemont and, and maybe more when we take the Breckner Plant into consideration, I think it would be reasonable to assume that we could likely do this project for the same or less. Like I said, conversations right now with MDE are, are very positive. They've been very supportive. They've provided us a market list of things that we need to do or that we would need to do to move forward with it. It's interesting because one, you know, we have to prove that the demand, that what we're asking is, is, is consistent with the proposed use, that the withdrawal is necessary, that it's reasonable and not wasteful. We need to show capacity management, our cap, capacity management plan, which is leak detection and that sort of thing. And we need to show them how it benefits our system in relationship to the existing plant and the new plant combined. So that's kind of the market list and then we would have all of the environmental things that I listed in the memo, looking at the flow data and the existing uses, aquatic life, looking at the TMDLs. We would have a pretty aggressive monitoring program we would need to do in advance of an appropriation. Looking at, we would have to consider VOCs, SOCs, all of those contaminants that have all kinds of crazy acronyms. And we would have to, of course, look at an intake citing, treatability and so on and so forth. Before I go any further, I could ask if anybody has any questions?
Tyler, what do you have to say? Or did he just come to?
Learning all this still and being thrown into it. I was in the latest conversation with Hazen on it. I think it's a good idea on the board.
That is my sexual despite, thank you.
Well, they, I, I mean, if we can accomplish in a new facility what we would still require in the old facility that's up in, that's up there. I mean, for roughly the same price to get, you know, five million gallons a day, I mean, why wouldn't we?
So, are they envisioning a weir system?
No.
This is just a direct intake?
It will be, it'll be essentially on the bottom of the stream. It'd be a screen system from the bottom.
Right, like a direct intake.
We will not have a dam or an impoundment.
But you still have flow by requirement.
Yes. Yes.
And you lose storage capacity?
Storage capacity in what way?
One of the, one of the advantages that you lose is storage capacity. Meaning you're dependent on that flow, that surface flow.
Yes, we would be dependent on the surface flow.
Right, to maintain adequate supply and flow by at all times in order for that use.
Yes, we are at Edgemont as well.
Right now.
And will be. We are required in the, in the, in the existing appropriation permit that is still in the works to get the maximum, to get all of the data refined in it. There'll be certain months during the summer, we may not even be able to withdraw because of the flow by. And in the Edgemont permit, it's going to be, either be point seven or point seven-five with a max of four point five or four point eight. This facility, we would be looking at a five MGD plant and then whatever the max is. We haven't defined the max. So as opposed to being able to pool less than a million gallons of water per day, this facility would allow us to withdraw average day five MGD.
It just doesn't let you store a hundred million gallons?
No.
Right.
It does not. No, it does not. But neither does our, you know, with the Potomac River intake, it's, you know, we don't store water there either.
So, when we do this evaluation and the, the PFAS and, and all of those, you know, the solids and everything that have to be looked at, are you doing that for comparative purposes of, of determining which course is the best? Or are you doing it strictly for the purpose of seeing if this water is, is
Treatable?
Safe enough to drink?
Or potable?
Both. These, and those analyses are done, they're, they're always ongoing on, on any source water. We do a hundred, a hundred and thirty-six parameters, I believe, on the Wilson Source. As part of the citing of the, citing, yeah, they would be done to determine treatability of the water and what treatment techniques would be required, you know, associated with a conventional water treatment plant. So they would be both. We have to do it, we would have to do it to cite the facility, but we would have to continue to do them just like they've done, you know, for, on the Wilson intake or every intake in Maryland. Those analyses are done to ensure that the finished water meets drinking water standards. Once a plant is built, they are done on the finished water, not the raw water because you have to look at treatability.
And would you be looking to abandon the Breckner Plant entirely?
If we did not have a source, yes. If, if Edgemont.
I thought the Breckner Plant does have groundwater source currently.
No, there's no groundwater source associated with it. The Breckner source is, the sole source is the Edgemont Reservoir. There's no alternate source for Breckner. This facility, we would, you know, if we can get everything through with MDE, we would have a five MGD plant and then we would have the Wilson Plant, which is the twenty MGD. Now, and we, we understand the limitations there. Make it much easier to overcome those limitations. The Edgemont Source and the Breckner Plant will never be a five MGD average day plant. You know, the permit will either be point seven or point seven-five during wet periods of the year. We're trying to get an average day at two point seven during wet periods. But during the summer, it's possible we won't be able to pull it off because we won't be able to meet the flow by. On the Antietam, we're looking at, and the, there's only, I think, one or two water intakes upstream in Pennsylvania. There's some, of course, there's a couple wastewater treatment plants way upstream. That's true of every source, but.
So are you talking about, are you talking about a facility on the Antietam that would have comparable storage capacity, obviously not to Edgemont? You, you couldn't replicate that, to what maybe is on the west end? Are you talking about just like a plant pulled in and shoved into the system?
No, we're, we're not looking at a reservoir system.
Not a reservoir?
Yeah, we're looking essentially.
But some type of tower? I can't imagine what you're gonna do is build a plant off of the Antietam, depend on the Antietam to provide five million gallons a day that you're gonna pull in, treat, send out into the system and not have a tower associated with at least some storage capacity, you know, within that.
On the east side.
Within that dynamic.
It's, you know, we haven't worked through all of the design. We're doing the Zone Five study. It's possible that we'll have an east, a, a tank on, you know, in the Zone Five area or even in the Zone One area. The Rockwilla and Helane Tanks, you know, of course, they store finished water on, on the west side. But if for some reason we had contamination in the Potomac and had to shut our intake, we only have about a day of, of water in storage.
I know that. That's why I said Edgemont gives you twelve days? In the best case scenario, it gives you twelve days worth of water. You couldn't shove that much through the system, but it gives you twelve days worth of water to shove into the system.
If we can, if it's, if it's all, if the total water column is treatable, yes, it, it will. But once you get down so far, the water, you get high iron, high manganese and. will, but once you get down so far, the water, you get high iron, high manganese, and it's so, if the water were treatable, a hundred percent treatable, and you could withdraw a hundred percent of it, yes, but that's, you know, except that's, that's looking at a...
Well, it's a groundwater system, it's more dependable traditionally over time, and it's cleaner traditionally.
It, it, it was just a different, you know, we have, we're, it's a different set of scenarios, I mean, we, we...
I'm just trying to wrap my brain around a summer like this, and I'm not, I'm, I think this is a cool idea, by the way, I think this is a cool alternative, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around a summer like we just went through, the last three months, right, and the northern counties, including ours, have faced a drought warning, then a drought watch, which we're, we're sort of hopefully getting to the tail end of, and I'm trying to imagine, depending on like five million ready-made gallons a day coming out of the Antietam Creek, I just, you know, I'm, I'm looking at it like that's half the size of, of the Monocacy, you know, that, that dependability without some type of one day storage capacity on the east side, doesn't make sense.
The study may flush that out, that we need to put storage in the system, we haven't went through, we haven't completed the study yet, we're, you know, we're, we're just conversations with MDE and...
Oh, I'll be real interested in, in, in the VOCs and, and the PFAS and things, I mean, that...
Us too, us too, the one thing with Edgemont during the summer, summer like we had with drought, there's so little water, because we have Warner Hollow and we have Raven Rock, Raven Rock is a hundred percent bypassing, but there's not enough stream flow in either of those, that we wouldn't, we wouldn't be permitted to do a draw, a withdrawal for water supply during the really dry months, once the new appropriation permits, so Edgemont, July, July and August likely would not provide a source for us because we, we wouldn't have the flow by.
Here's a really, really left-field question, if you're thinking about placing it along the Antietam, and my guess is you're looking somewhere between, like, north of Eastern Boulevard, to, what is it, Valley Forge or Old Forge or whatever, somewhere in that vicinity, right, and within that vicinity is one of the quarries, right? I mean, a really left-field question is, is their ability to somehow, you know what I mean?
We can ask.
All I'm saying is that gives you an available storage location that MDE doesn't really care about, that the owner doesn't want there to begin with, that allows you to tap into that should that necessity arise, should Antietam not be able to produce at a moment that you need, you know what I mean, to pull that volume?
We can ask that question.
Like, I would be looking at situating it somewhere where it makes it convenient enough to be able to pipe to that and use that, you know, almost like a dry hydrant situation.
And one thing to remember with, with any, with Edgemont as well as the Antietam, is the, unless we have a portion of the treatment down at Wilson for an upgrade, any flow that we can't pull, let's just say our, let's say our flow is reduced to three, three million, we can, you know, we can still supplement that, meet that demand with Wilson, the system, the distribution system would be divi, design, you know, the modifications to the distribution system would allow us to open or close whatever valves we needed to direct the water where we needed it, needed it the most, wherever we needed it to go, while it was being served from the Antietam, those valves, there's, you know, valves that would be normally open and normally closed, you'd switch the position of those valves if you needed to feed from Wilson.
Last question, because I think this is a really intriguing idea, or concept, we have hundreds of acres, right, up on the mountain, that are, are watershed for this Edgemont reservoir purpose, right, if we were to decommission that location, we no longer need Brickner, does that mean we need to continue to retain ownership of that land?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Nope.
Should've led with that part.
(laughing).
I just think that's a benefit because, you know, they're not making any more land, right?
They're not making any more.
Not of that quality and of that nature.
And we get asked about it all the time.
Yeah, so...
We didn't, no, we'd no longer need it.
You know, that to me is interesting.
And even with the decommissioning of Edgemont, one of the things that, that we conveyed to DNR is that, long-term, we didn't want any high-hazard dam liability associated with a stormwater feature, that, so however this, you know, however, however it was decommissioned, that, that, that high-hazard dam liability went away as well, just, we don't like having that, obviously.
That begs the question now in my mind, did we sell the farm too soon? The one right next to the Antietam that we literally had two thousand linear feet in front of them?
Oh. Well, you know, um...
We could make it up as land in the watershed.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I'm just, well, it's not close enough to the quarry, but anyway, that's all the question I have.
Yeah, you know, I'm not sure exactly where we cite the plant yet, I don't know the exact location of the intake, what I do know is either gravity or pumps, we can get the water to the plant, the other thing that I'm sure of is having, doing the treatability study, what, however the plant needs to be designed, whether it's a reversed osmosis plant, or we have to put, what's the...
Membranes?
No, not membranes, it's a carbon.
With the carbon filter?
Yeah, the carbon filters for PFAS, that we would do that...
I mean, I'm not really finding it in surface water systems, so...
No, but we would know at the design, at, at the design stage, what type of treatment we would have to put in, and I know, for me, and I know Tyler's the same way, we're pretty excited about the prospect of having a new facility that will get us back where we were and give us, I'm missing just enough breathing room that we can make those upgrades to Wilson and the transmission mains, and, you know, be able to keep this, this system online, so I...
Yep, I think it's a great idea, and I think...
They're tired of us talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, you guys could be here for hours.
See, they think that I forgot last week that they reminded me of how quick their meeting was.
Is that what you do?
And so, I've been sitting here the last fifteen minutes just thinking about that.
So, I just have one question.
Because that's how my mind works.
The recommendations that are outlined in the memo are, is everybody fine with the recommendations with it?
Yes.
That's all I need, that's my...
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt that.
Thank you.
No, no, no time.
And I wasn't the one who...
I know, that's why I kept looking at her.
I know, and I wouldn't even do it, because I'm not...
Oh, my goodness, we won't, we won't say that anymore.
You're welcome.
Ever again, we apologize, good sir, city administrator.
Just, just a couple things, I want to go back to the coalition presentation, I'm the one that goes to those meetings, and just to assure everyone that what gets talked about in these community coalition meetings, there's nothing confidential about it, I go back to our lobbyists, we meet every other week, and make sure that he's on top of what we're talking about, to avoid those communication issues, I think John Favazza and Rob Gergiova communicated very well with each other last session, and I, I don't see any, any issues going forward, in fact, they were instrumental on the tax sale side, getting that first bill through, because that was starting to hit some bumpy patches also, and then they'll also work together on getting this last one through, so communication lines are, are open between the two, and I make sure that Rob is up to date on, on, on everything the coalition's doing, and we still do need to do things because there are things that the coalition would not agree with you all, that would be legislative priorities.
A priority for us, right.
Yeah, they're priorities for us, they may not be for the others, I think that's why we need that additional voice, just like, just like was said.
Well, I didn't hear any complaining, at least, at least didn't fall on my ears.
No, the other thing on, on the ARPA, I just want to commend the folks that are doing the review of these fifty-plus applications, they got a lot to look at, and there's always gonna, there's gonna be those very happy with what they decide, and there's gonna be those very upset with what they decide, so I think it's why it's important that they take the time to make sure that, one, all of the applications are thorough, and, two, that they meet all of the requirements of what the ARPA regulations are, so, we're not slow-rolling anything, but we want to make sure it's done right, that's all we're trying to do.
What's happening this weekend?
What's happening this weekend, Walk Maryland Day, Wednesday, October fourth, twelve o'clock, Fairgrounds Park, looks like it's free, anybody can join, Fiber Fest is, and that's fiber as in yarn, not fiber as in fiber optic, which I was always confused about before, but that's kind of where my head goes, like Kristin's goes to water, mine goes to fiber optics, and I don't know why you would want to try to knit with fiber optics, anyway, it would break, right? Second Annual, free to attend, on University Plaza, nine to four on Saturday, last thing is there is a free concert in Wheaton Park on Friday, October sixth, from four to seven, Eddie Peters and Kiara will be singing.
Ooh.
So, that was like a nice time, too.
Eddie can sing.
He can.
That's it for me, yeah, Eddie's, Eddie's awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman McIntyre.
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Verzi.
I'm good.
Councilwoman Burnett.
I just want to say, thanks for having another location for a concert, I know we talked about this months ago, about exploring other avenues of just not having at the University Plaza or, or Potomac Street, so, yeah, I'm looking forward to that concert, and thanks for listening to us, staff, folks, that's all.
Councilman Asher.
I have one thing, actually meant to bring it up last week, and I had the piece of paper, but I don't have it anyway, but the early voting locations that were selected, and I know this isn't popular, probably isn't even popular for me to say it, because I love the people, people over at the election board office, it's right down the street from me, it's super convenient, and I know it's super convenient for them to have the early voting location, for what we generally consider in-town, being there, I get it, but I do think we have to recognize the fact that, that that location is not in downtown the way that it used to be, and there are a ton of folks that, you know, want to and need to, and like to get there for that purpose, that just aren't going to be able to, and so I don't know who makes those decisions about where they're selected, or what the reasons are behind them, but it was odd to me that, you know, we didn't have an early voting location downtown where, you know, everybody out there, for every other thing under the sun, seems to believe that that's where those types of services belong, all of them except for this one, it just doesn't make sense, so, that's my two-minute tip box on that.
I agree. Well, I want to say congratulations and happy retirement to Captain Taylor Stoops, and then FAO Scott Bear, Ohio, I heard he was from Ohio when he first came to Heggers Town, that's all he talked about to the Platoon Fire Department, told him, no more stories from Ohio, so he's retired and moved back to Ohio, and so I heard them ask that hopefully he's in Ohio now talking as much about Heggers Town as he did when he moved here, FOA Steven, Steve Mitchell, FAO, I'm sorry, FAO Dan, is that Grenard, Grenad, and then?
Garnand.
Garnand, FAO Rick Conrad, one of the things I, first of all, I got there a little late, and I got to see them honor Conrad, and Conrad was hilarious, but one of the things that he said was, I know that the mayor is sitting out there, and mayor, you gotta know this, you have the best fire department ever, and so I thought that was really amazing that he shouted that out, and then also to know that he was the one beside Mrs. Reed when she lost her husband, and she came up and honored him, and it was so moving, brought me to tears, she lost her husband, and one of the things that the fire department did was they assigned someone, that no matter what she needed, no matter what time of night, no matter what it was, they were to make it happen and get it done, and that was Conrad, and he's just this big old guy, but man, I just, I, I just seen Taylor talk about how soft and gentle, and how kind he was during that time that she was mourning the loss of her husband, and then also FAO Will Bell, and I told them that I was gonna talk about them in closing comments, because they felt as though, once I came in the door, that they were, they didn't want to be inappropriate anymore, and one, the MC said that he got like eight texts that said, the mayor's here, the mayor's here, but they couldn't stop, and I wanted to say that I thoroughly enjoyed that, that they, first of all, have a brotherhood, and second of all, do not take themselves so serious that the ceremony was just stuffy, and, you know, it was just about retirement, I mean, it was just amazing, and I thought they had a great time, and dinner was awesome, and with that also, oh, wait, Run for Reentry is up to, is this Saturday, and Run for Reentry is Community Mediation, Lorik Trakudian, she's also a delegate for Tacoma Park, she runs seventy miles in two days, so she will leave from Heggers Town on Saturday morning at, look at your eyes, at eight AM, at eight AM, and she will run until the sun goes down, and then on Sunday, they drop her off at that marked location, and she finishes the run to the Baltimore Center, the Community Mediation Center, and she runs to raise money for people who cannot afford to come to Heggers Town to have mediation sessions with their loved ones, and I think that the, what's important about that for our community is that this service is provided, and they're able to make a plan two years before they come home, so that they can return home, and if they need their ID, if they need their birth certificates, we bring in their family members, and I say we, because it's my favorite mediation, we bring in their loved ones, that they can begin to make those plans, that way when they're released, it's not a hard thing that they have to go through, and so thank you, Community Mediation, and I can't wait to be at the rally on Saturday, and with that, we're adjourned.
We out, Eric.
What you gotta say?
What you gotta say?
What you gotta say? You know, you know who makes the decisions where the following places is?
I don't know.
Yeah, you don't?
Mm-mm.
Derek.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.